Welcome to the 2023 Town Council Candidate Forum. My name is Chris Wilson. I'm the Chair of the Republican Town Committee and the Moderator for tonight's candidate forum. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The forum is being held on Tuesday, July 18, 2023, at the Carriage Barn in beautiful Waveney Park. We have a live audience of New Canaan Republicans on hand to see our Town Council candidates, one of three contested offices in this year's Republican Caucus. We held a separate candidate forum for the first selectman candidates earlier tonight, and we will hold a forum for the Board of Ed candidates on Friday, June 21, this Friday, from 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. The Board of Education Candidate Forum will be an in-person event only, open to Republican, New Canaan Republicans, and held in the Town Hall Meeting Room. Before we get started, I wanted to provide a few reminders about the caucus. It will be held next Tuesday, July 25, at Saks Middle School. The caucus is an in-person-only event. There's no absentee voting allowed. Doors will open at 6:00 p.m., and the caucus meeting will start at 6:30 in the auditorium at Saks. As part of the caucus meeting, each candidate for, in a contested race, will have five minutes for speeches in favor of their nomination. The caucus is open to registered New Canaan Republicans only. If you would like to vote without taking part in the caucus meeting or watching the candidate speeches, then you should arrive after 6:45 and head straight to the gym where the voting's taking place. Voting closes at 9:00 p.m. sharp. If you have any questions, please go to our website, newcananrepublicans.org, where you'll find the caucus rules and a detailed guide called Six Things to Know About the 2023 Republican Caucus. One final point worth highlighting, the New Canaan RTC has sole responsibility for the running of the Republican Caucus, and we take our responsibility to run a fair, open, and unbiased process very seriously. The RTC does not endorse any candidates in the caucus. There are no handpicked candidates on the Republican side. It can be a messy process, but it has proven over the years to be a successful way to select candidates that can win in November. The candidate forums have also been organized by the New Canaan RTC, and the questions for our Town Council candidates prepared by a small group within the RTC with a view of maintaining security around them. None of these questions have been shared with the candidates or campaigns in advance. The New Canaan RTC thanks all of the candidates for putting themselves forward to run for office. This is a challenging process, and we appreciate the dedication and sense of civic responsibility it takes to put yourself forward for an office. Please give all our candidates a round of applause. Now to introduce our Town Council candidates. They are, in sitting order, Maria Naughton, Eric Tunam, Keith Ritchie, Christina Ross, and Mike Morrow. Now I'll remind the candidates how the forum will work. We will start with three-minute opening speeches from each candidate. The order of the speeches was determined by lots drawn ahead of time, and will be in the order you're sitting. After the opening speeches, we will have four regular questions and one short-answer question. The first question will go to Eric, and we will continue to rotate the first responder. You will have up to two minutes to answer each question, each regular question, and 30 seconds to answer the short-answer question. If you do not have two minutes' worth of things to say, you do not need to take all of your allotted time. Some of our Town Council candidates are running as a slate. If a candidate is called on by name, they will have 60 seconds to provide a rebuttal. If, and this will be at the moderator's discretion, if a candidate, sorry, if a group is referenced by a candidate not belonging to the group, only one representative from the group will provide a reply, and the representative will be chosen ahead of time and made known to the moderator. John Criss is again keeping time. He will raise his hand to indicate when you have 15 seconds left, and a bell will sound when your time is up. And now, we're on to the three-minute opening statements. First up, Maria Naughton.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maria Naughton, and I am running for reelection to the Town Council. First, I'd like to start by saying thank you for all coming out tonight, and thank you for staying after the first selectman debate. And I really appreciate your involvement in this process. To start, to tell you a little bit about myself, my husband, Bob, and I moved to New Canaan in 2002. We have four children who have all gone through the public schools. Three of them have graduated from college, thank God. Thanks be to God. And we have one more who's starting as a sophomore in the fall at Scranton. I, myself personally, I attended SUNY Albany, I think. Did you go there, Mike?
You did?
I did. I attended SUNY Albany. I left after graduating. I started working at GE Capital in Stanford, and I was there for several years, ending up in the Aviation Services Department. And at that time, we had a volunteer program. I got involved with a mentoring program in Stanford, and I realized I wanted to go into teaching. I completed my master's degree from Sacred Heart University, and I began teaching in middle school in Norwalk about 27 years ago. While teaching, I continued my graduate studies, focusing on instructional technology and educational leadership. I'm certified K through 12, and I'm also state-certified in administration. For the last 20 years or so, I've worked in all levels of education and transitioned into, from being a classroom teacher to training and working with teachers and administrators in Fairfield County. Currently, I'm working in Norwalk Public Schools again. I've come full circle, and I'm a trainer in the schools, training staff on technology. Additionally, I'm a licensed Realtor since 2014. In town, I've had the pleasure of serving on the RTC, the Board of Ed, and most recently, the Town Council for the last four years, where I've served on the Finance and Government Committee, Bylaws and Ordinance Committee, Parks and Rec, and the Education Committee. In addition, I volunteer at St. Alewish's Church, and I'm a strong supporter of their AMAS program, where my husband and I proudly join the ranks of volunteers who have served thousands of high school students over the years. I am really proud to run for Town Council again. Being on the Town Council has given me the opportunity to see the inner workings of our town and how hard everyone works, and all the professionals and volunteers that we have, and I want to remain a part of that, and I hope you will support me in the caucus. Thank you.
Eric.
Good evening. Thank you for being here, and thanks to the RTC and to those at the Carriage Barn who make this space available to us. I'm Eric Tunam, and I'm standing for election to the Town Council of New Canaan. I'm running because I want to serve the people of this town and participate in the municipal legislative process that makes New Canaan a great place to live. I grew up in New Canaan. This is my hometown. I attended Center School, East School, and graduated from New Canaan High School, where I played drums in the marching band. I was a Boy Scout in Troop 70, and I earned the rank of Eagle Scout. I graduated from the University of Connecticut in 1979 and spent 11 years in the oil and gas business, in Texas and then in New York, where I earned an MBA at Columbia University in 1995. I spent the next 26 years in financial services and retired at the end of 2021. I've volunteered in church and community service groups for more than 40 years. I currently serve as a board member of the Town Players, an advisor for the New Canaan Parents Support Group, and a member of the New York Regional Advisory Board for Care and Treatment Centers. I've worked at the Mayfair for as long as I can remember, serving as co-chair for two years. And for the past 20 years, I've also had a lot of fun, being an actor, researcher, writer, producer, and director for the annual Gridiron Show, a 60-year New Canaan tradition that celebrates community service and has showcased many of New Canaan's most spirited and inspirational volunteers. If I'm elected to Town Council, I plan to listen more than speak, to serve with integrity and respect all my colleagues in-town government. I plan to study and understand the issues that are important to taxpayers. I plan to exercise intelligent discretion and fiscal responsibility in voting on matters that impact everyone in town. I plan to do what's best for all of New Canaan. My wife, Cinni, and I have lived in New Canaan since 1997, and we raised our two sons here. New Canaan has excellent schools, abundant town resources, and wide-ranging municipal services. It's a very special hometown. There are challenges facing us, and we need to be creative and collaborative, not contentious, in finding effective solutions. We need to maintain public safety, preserve property values, and continue providing the best educational opportunities for our children. We need to be careful about zoning, thoughtful about preserving open land, and we must approach the challenges of improving cellular service in ways that make scientific sense and protect our citizens. Finally, I'm honored to have been invited by three incumbents to join them on a slate of candidates for Town Council. What that means is that we endorse each other's candidacy, and we benefit from sharing expenses leading to the caucus. I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. And now Keith Ritchie.
Good evening. I'm Keith Ritchie. My priorities are as follows: to keep taxes as low as possible without sacrificing our excellent schools or the services expected by our citizens; to be an advocate for citizen engagement and transparency; to preserve the world-class level of our schools, parks, recreational and other facilities; to support the economic well-being and ambiance of downtown New Canaan; to enhance on-campus mental health services along with taking other necessary measures to ensure public school safety; to work with state officials to improve the New Canaan train line for commuters. I'm looking forward to working with the Revitalized Utility Commission, the administration, and voters to reach consensus on improving cell service and natural gas availability. I will oppose attempts by property developers to overcome local zoning requirements by using 830G and other similarly ill-conceived state legislation. My wife and I have lived in New Canaan for over 32 years. We've raised our family here. In that time, I've served as chairman of the Parking Commission for 20 years, and served the last two years as an active member of the Parks and Recs Commission. Also, I'm a longtime member of and a real participant, and held leadership positions in several local organizations, including the Exchange Club, the New Canaan Men's Club, the Poinsettia Club, and on and on. In fact, in the Poinsettia Club, I was one of the four men to lead the charge to have women community leaders admitted into that group. I have a bachelor's degree in Business Administration from the University of Southern California, cum laude, a law degree from the University of Texas at Austin, and a master's of laws in tax from NYU. I worked as a corporate tax lawyer for ExxonMobil, Citibank, Xerox, ITT, with ever-increasing levels of responsibility. As you look at the five candidates for Town Council, I believe that you will see that I offer a unique set of qualifications: extensive experience within our municipal government, significant involvement in a broad range of community activities and organizations, plus a corporate lawyer used to dealing with complicated financial transactions. This combination of education, experience, leadership, and people skills will make me an effective member of Town Council. Thank you.
Next, Christina Ross.
Good evening. Thank you to Chris for chairing this and to the RTC for putting it together. This is a beautiful venue. To the audience, my name is Christina Aguirre-Ross, and I'm a licensed architect with 30 years of experience in a wide range of areas, including corporate, educational, healthcare, historic preservation, and residential projects. My expertise is in architectural design and project management. I am proficient in contract negotiations, budget management, and fast-track projects. My work on ethics, my work ethics has always been client-focused, results-oriented, and fiscally responsible. Working on major corporate institutional projects such as UPenn, MIT, Central Park Conservancy, Montefiore, Cornell Medical Center, Hackensack Medical Center, NBC, Time Inc., and many projects at JP Morgan provided me with the opportunity to excel and deliver with the highest level of professionalism and excellence. My professional volunteer work includes designing multiple projects for nonprofits in New Canaan, such as the New Canaan Care Offices in New Canaan High School, and the New Canaan Nature Center, which encompass the visitor center, early childhood building, main house, and the greenhouse. These projects were all pro bono to help them realize their goal and maximize their return on their fundraising efforts. Presently, my local government responsibilities include Town Council. I was elected, and I'm serving eight years. The New Canaan Republican Town Committee, in which I've served 20 years, and the Preservation Connecticut Board Trustees, which I'm presently serving. In previous years, I have served on the Park and Recreation Committee, New Canaan Open Space and Conservation Committee, and have been involved with many other local organizations. I am running because New Canaan needs a representative on Town Council who can professionally assess many of the projects and bonded projects which are being proposed or are currently under construction. Present administrative hurdles in completing projects on time, on budget, and without cost overruns are of great concern. Legal issues cited by the DOJ on New Canaan's ADA compliance, with projects failing to meet the FDA guidelines, heavils have been raised. Addressing these and other issues are the main reason why I'm running for another term on Town Council. I believe that every resident deserves to be represented and every dollar spent, budget, and bond, to be accounted for. The Town Council is the only elected legislative body. Its experience, knowledge, and accountability needs to be an integral part of its membership to help guide and focus on ensuring the best outcomes and realize for New Canaan. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. And finally, Mike Morrow.
Hello, everybody. Many of you know me. My name is Mike Morrow. I've been in town since 2016. I have two kids that are in the public school system, and my wife and I live over on Gertie's Road. I'm a lawyer, primarily a labor lawyer. I negotiate with unions, but I'm also a trial lawyer and appellate lawyer. I've argued cases in every level of the court system in the United States, except for the Supreme Court. I'll start off with, and I've been on Town Council for six years. So I'll start off with a quick story as to why you can understand and why I want to run again and continue to serve. And I do want to say thank you for hosting this event tonight and to all my people running here. I think you're all, every one of you are fantastic, and it's a privilege to be up here. But, you know, for me, it's a privilege and an honor to be in this town. You know, my wife and I, we were, and by the way, excuse my Long Island accent. I've been living in Connecticut for 17 years, and it's, I think it's gotten worse. My kids don't have it, so, which is a nice thing. So, in any event, my wife and I had, you know, the choice, like many of us, to move into different towns in this area, and, you know, obviously, thank God, we ended up here in New Canaan, you know, kind of divine providence, and, you know, everything kind of works out the way it's supposed to be. We bought a house that, you know, my wife and I don't even, we were in over our head. I'm like, I don't know how we're going to, you know, make this work, but we make it work. You know, my wife works, and I work. So, but the quick story, last fall, I was on the football field. I'm a coach for the fifth grade, or rising sixth grade football kids, and I'm also a board member of the New Canaan Youth Football Board. I'm on the, I'm coaching. I have my son playing football, my daughter, I have twins, they're 11 years old. My daughter is playing field hockey on another field, and I see my wife off to the side, you know, playing tennis. And, you know, and I'm on Town Council, and I'm, you know, it was like a beautiful late summer night, and the sun was setting over the Waveney fields, and I'm like, I cannot believe I live in this town. I cannot believe that I'm on Town Council, and I serve 20,000 people in this town. I can't believe my children are going to the schools here. I just, and I'm bringing value. I can't believe I'm a coach, you know? And I played football in college, and I never thought I'd coach, but it was, it's a perfect fit for me. So, you know, all of this comes together, and, you know, people say to me, well, how do you handle all of this? Plus, I drive to Long Island almost every day for my job, right? So, you know, people are like, how can you keep up with it? And I said, because this town is worth it. Everyone that's sitting here is worth it. And I've said this over and over again in six years. You know, I take my responsibility of representing 20,000 people very seriously. Every dollar we spend, every decision we make has to make sure, I want to make sure it's the right decision being made for all of us, and everybody's in on it, and everyone agrees with it, to the extent you can get people to agree on everything. So I want to serve you all again. I want to serve this town again, and that's it. So I vote for you.
And now, on to our four regular questions. As a reminder, you have two minutes to respond, and if your name's been called out, 60 seconds for a rebuttal. So the first question, question number one, goes to Eric Tunam. What is your view on how the Town Council has operated in the recent past, and what can you do to make it function better going forward?
Well, I can answer that pretty quickly and not take up the two minutes, so we'll move this along. I've never been on Town Council. I've heard stories about how contentious it can be. I've heard stories about how wonderful people work together, and not everybody works together. All I can say is that my history of 37 years of employment, managing people, managing teams, my 40-plus years of volunteer efforts in New Canaan and Texas and everywhere else I've been, points to a person who gets along with other people, points to a person who can collaborate, who can listen more than speak, and who can get things done when things need to be, when things need to be done. That's how I'm going to work on Town Council, and if elected, and if you will elect me to your Town Council, I'll serve, I'll listen, I'll collaborate, and I hope that it will get better than it ever has been. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keith, like my friend Eric, I also have not been on Town Council before, but I have watched some of the sessions on Channel 79. And I must say, sometimes they gave me a headache. It was difficult to watch, and watching them is one of the reasons I'm here tonight, running, because I think we can do better. If you look at my record, I've been president of the Exchange Club, president of the Men's Club, president of the Poinsettia Club, president of the Dance Club, chief of the Euro Court Drive. In almost every organization I've been a member of, I've moved into leadership positions, and I've made many, many friends. And I think, no matter who wins here tonight, I think I'll be able to work with any of this group, and be proud to do so. I have established a collegial environment in every organization I've worked in, and I think we'll see that here. I think we'll see relationships improve. I think we'll get our business done in a business-like fashion, but in a friendly way, with a sense of perspective and a sense of humor. Thank you.
Christina.
Could you repeat the question?
Yes. What is your view on how Town Council has operated in the recent past, and what can you do to make it function better going forward?
One of the problems that I have seen on Town Council, especially over the last few years, has been the last-minute announcements of the way in which decisions have been made without the input of Town Council, and furthermore, without the knowledge of Town Council. To have read in the paper, for example, that the ADA projects to upgrade at Waveney or other buildings failed, and that the DOJ is taking action against us, was devastating, given that we had given and approved millions of dollars, and that the project wasn't done on time or right. The way in which certain projects are not bidet, the way in which decisions are made behind the scenes, has to stop, and we need a change. We need a change from the top down. It's not an issue of who's on top, but having the right person at the top to lead it. Town Council is the only legislative body, and we have basically a fundamental system that our budgets are proposed by the Board of Selectmen, approved and sent down to the Town Council by the Board of Finance. And without the knowledge within the Board of Finance or the Board of Selectmen on how construction works, you have bad decisions like we had at the Playhouse in excessive over expenditures. So those are the things that really get to me, and that's the reason why I'm running, and I hope that I see everybody at the polls.
Thank you. Mike? Mike?
Yes. So, a few things. One, I do agree with much of what Christina said. I believe over the last six years I've been on Town Council, a lot of times, decisions are coming to us that are, it's like a fait accompli. It's like, here it is, just vote for it, and don't ask questions. And it, I don't particularly like that. So, and I think that we've been making some progress recently to kind of shift course, and there's a few projects in town that we're working on. So I'd like to see more of, more of a deliberative process kind of out in the open. I don't like anything behind closed doors, and I like to be brought in on the process to understand really what's going on and all the, you know, conflicting information, and really be able to drill down and analyze it. So I do think that's part of, an issue that has to get improved. I think our spending has to be tightened up. You know, when I first got on, I was complaining about some, something we were spending money on. You know, someone said to me, it's New Canaan. We like nice things. Well, we all like nice things, but it has to be paid for. And I'm literally, when I have to pass a budget, and I say, yes, there's $161 million, taxpayers, go pay it. It's me putting my hand in some, in my pocket, the pocket of the person next to me at, like Rosie's or something, give me that money. I've got to go pay for this. So I want to make sure that we're actually spending the money on exactly what we need, not what we would like to have. There's a project in Waveney right now that's going to be coming online that I just, I didn't agree with. I thought it was just too much, but it passed anyway. So that's, I think, an issue I really want us to focus on and watch. Our per capita debt that we have is the highest in the state, and we do pay it down, but come on. I mean, we all run our households very, very tight. The other thing that I'm concerned about, there's a real cold chill of partisanship creeping into the Town Council. I don't like it. I haven't experienced it when I first got on. When you walk into our meetings, when I started, you wouldn't know who the Democrats or the Republicans were. Now you know. And I don't think that serving the residents of this town very well, and that we have to push back on it, all of us, both sides. It's not right for the people. It's just not.
Thank you. Maria? Maria.
I kind of want to break it down a little bit. How has the Town Council operated? I would say, for the most part, it is contentious. It can give you a headache. I think the chair's like herding cats a lot of times, just trying to keep everyone in line, but in a way, I think that's appropriate. I think we're, we all have views that we bring to the table that are based on the people we know and the input we get. And I am proud to say that even with that, we move ideas forward. You know, we moved forward on the police department, and it's in the place we want. So we also streamline the budget process a little, where we kind of pay attention more to the presentations that are given before the budgets come to us, which I think actually is why we have more questions when they come to us, because we sort of know. We know where the budget stands, and all we have are questions kind of at that point. How we could improve, I would like to see the Town Council looped in earlier on some issues. It seems like we get it at the, it feels like it's the last minute. It feels like we are under pressure to make a decision on something. I would like to see decisions come to us sooner. I would like a better system for updates on capital projects. So sometimes we'll fund things, and then you realize, you know, they're going over budget. I think we need to work on that a little bit better. And as far as the partisanship comment, that is interesting. When I first started on the Town Council, you really couldn't tell who was who, and I would like to go back to that. So, that's it.
Thank you. I'm going to say, there's no need for rebuttal on question one, so we'll go straight on to question two, and Keith will be up first. The proposed West School cell tower has generated significant opposition. How do we address the need for cell service for public safety and communication with the concerns of neighbors and parents about living near or going to school near cell towers?
Thank you. Somehow, I guess, that would come up. I know from personal experience that better cell coverage is a significant public safety issue. I'm not a scientist, but I don't think that there's any health issue associated with cell towers or cell service in general. And frankly, if there is, how do we solve that problem? Because when we talk about having satellites to address it or other means, whatever way you do, we use to get better cell service, it means the transmission of the same radio waves, and if there is any health risk, the same health risk. waves, and if there is any health risk, the same health risk. So there's no real getting around it. If you're going to have better cell coverage, you have to encounter the health risk. Again, my research indicates there is none. How do you balance it? Well, I think we're all glad that the Utilities Commission has been reconstituted, and it will examine the need and determine the best sites. We need to try to keep an open mind while the Utilities Commission does its research. One site that was proposed is the West School site. And I have to say even to my friend Kevin, that I've never been a huge fan of that, because you have the six-acre campus, which is an elementary school, and it does seem to me that's such a divisive thing, that it was just politically not going to really get started, and wasn't worth the stress to the body politic in our town. Regarding the other 40 acres, the ground falls off so much that a tower would have to be 185 feet tall. That's 100 feet taller than the nearest tree, like a 10-story building on top of a tree. I think there must be a better site. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Christina?
Well, I think the part of the problem starts with communication. There was no communication for a few years on the cell towers regarding West School, and then it appeared. And like many other decisions, they're done behind the scenes, nobody's informed, and it's delivered as, I've solved the problem, here it is. So the problem becomes the process, and the process is very secretive. So when the West School parents came up, it reminded me of the bus, the school bus situation, where the lack of communication leads to many conclusions, whether they're correct or incorrect, that is already set. And to turn it around, we have to start with a clean slate. There is, how do we address it? I think education is number one. With the reconstituted Utilities Commission, we can hear what the commission is thinking about, where they're going, and it gives the public the opportunity to speak and contribute their opinions to the process in the decision-making. So how do we move forward with this is, we inform everybody when the meetings start, what the topics are going to be, and we offer the opportunity for the parents to speak, and the teachers, and the students. And we use that as a footprint going forward as to how we respectfully deal as elected officials with the public in keeping them informed and making them part of the process.
Thank you. Mike?
Chris, could you repeat the question? I want to make sure I heard.
Yes. The proposed West School cell tower generated significant opposition. How do we address the need for cell service for public safety and communication with the concerns of neighbors and parents about living near or going to school near cell towers?
Sure. Well, you know, I agree, putting that cell tower or proposing it in that location was incredibly divisive, and to me, it was dead on arrival. Which is, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I would never vote in favor of that. We do need a deliberative process. We have the Utilities Commission now that's been constituted. But more importantly, you know, having sat through a very contentious public session of our town council on this particular issue, and we had, you know, however many people filled up town hall, you know, we had, and I'm always amazed by the caliber and talent of people that live in this town. And we had people who, you know, like, PhDs from MIT. We had NASA people. We had, you know, people who were serious telecommunications, skilled people, you know, all coming forward with serious concerns, backed by data and science. They need to be brought into the process and work together collaboratively, out in the open, so we can all see it, right? Sunshine is the best disinfectant, right? The Louis Brandeis said. And it's the truth. So let's have everybody involved and come up with the right solution. But the issue with public safety needs to be really, you need to understand that, because I, you know, I would co-chair the Public Safety Committee on the town council. They have their ability to communicate. They are not cut off. They have separate systems that they can use. I've chatted with the chiefs, and with Russ Kimes, our emergency services director. It's not a public safety issue, okay? It's just, they can communicate. And they have ability to call to Starlink. So they have the ability to do that. So it's, it's a little pretextual to say, well, it's a public safety issue. It's not. They have their ability to communicate. And there's now next-generation technology that exists that I think the town really needs to consider. So that's what I say.
Thank you. Maria?
I think the first good step is forming the Utilities Commission again. I think, you know, of course, bringing in community and educating people is huge. Having a buy-in in 2017, it's almost, we've had so many people move in and out in those, you know, just think about COVID, how many people moved into town? You almost had a whole new set of interested people. So you almost have to start over. Some of the studies, I felt the coverage study was out of date, in my opinion. I think technology is improving, phones are improving. So in some ways, we, it's really good we have this Utilities Commission. We kind of go back a little bit to the drawing board, bring in the community, educate people, and come up with, you know, where's our actual need, and how do we meet it?
Thank you, Maria. Eric?
In the 1950s, New Canaan was a great place to live. It's still a great place to live. In the 1950s, there were no cell phones and no cell towers. We addressed issues of public safety. We were concerned about our children. We took care of ourselves. We took care of our community. We took care of our neighbors. So let me just set that as a context that we all need to keep in mind. Cell towers are a new technology over the last 20 or 30 years. And what really concerns people is the radio frequency waves, the RF waves, which, by the way, are also generated by cell phones, which many of our children carry and press to their heads for hours a day. They're also issued, RF waves are also issued by microwave ovens, which most of us probably have in our kitchens. The question is, first of all, a lot of technologies generate these RF waves. The real question is, how dangerous are the waves, and what level, and to what length of time do those waves become dangerous to children or to grownups? So the question is, what level of risk are we willing to accept? That's one question. And number two, how much are we willing to spend to address those risks? So the first thing I would love to see is take the emotion out of this argument. Number two, understand and study the science of cell phones and cell towers, everybody. Number three, weigh the risks and weigh the costs. And then number four, as I said in my opening remarks, work collaboratively and creatively to come up with the best solution. 100% of the people in New Canaan are not going to be happy with every decision that the Board of Selectmen and the town council makes. We've got to do our best to work together to make things happen.
Okay. Once again, we have no need for rebuttal period, so we'll go on to regular question number three. Connecticut's affordable housing mandate, known as 830G, remains a hot topic in town. How do we best address our affordable housing needs and get the town back into moratorium? And this goes to Christina.
The 830G process has been very heavy to deal with. And by that, I mean that it has come from Hartford without any real input from the towns themselves. We have deadlines to meet, and we have an obligation, both to the community and to Connecticut at large. And I feel that New Canaan dropped the ball and mishandled the process to, what is it called?
The moratorium. The moratorium?
Yes, the mor, to file for the moratorium. And there was no excuse for it. And I remember we had a meeting at Irwin Park with the neighbors, and the response by the first selectman when he was asked as to why it wasn't met within the schedule, we just missed the deadline, he responded with something, and the neighbors just said, it sounds like the dog ate my homework excuse. And I think in many ways it was, because there was no reason for us not to be able to provide something, even if it, if it didn't encompass everything we wanted to say. And I think that, again, certain decisions come from the top without any inclusion of town council. We didn't know about it until it was read in the papers. And that is inexcusable as to how a town is run. As far as how we move forward, I think that the town needs to start with a new zoning plan, town-wide, to realize where development needs to go, where it can go, and the property values, and how it will affect them, and provide for the things that we need to provide by statute. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Sure. So the affordable housing issue, right, it's like a Gordian knot, right? You know, you just, how do you kind of untangle property rights versus estate mandate? You know, how do you throw a rock into a lily pond and not have the lilies just, you know, blow off and out of the pond? You know, it's, it was very disappointing that we lost, the moratorium expired, because at least that was the breathing room to give us the opportunity to develop some type of a plan. But our, we are, our back is against the wall. And like any decision in life, that's a terrible spot to be in, right? So what do we do? We have got to move with lightning speed with our Affordable Housing Committee and come up with a plan, okay, whether it be potentially the lumberyard lot or wherever. We need to identify parcels, we need to invite developers in, we need to, if we have to land lease for, you know, 100 years, and let them develop, and get HUD tax credits for them to come in and build it out, and cooperate with us as a town, to invite the developers in to a specified, particular plot, and they can work with us to develop the plan of something we would be, you know, happy to have in our town. That's what we need to do. I don't believe that the process has gone on at all, and I want that process, again, to be out into the public with people to come in, be invited in, to listen and to talk, give presentations, and ask questions, and have an interactive process. If I lived over by some of these proposed developments, okay, I would be fuming. And I think, you know, and I'm on town council, I have a voice. The people who aren't elected, they need a voice, and they need someone to say, let's figure this out, this is wrong, this is not right, we have to do better. And we're just not doing better.
Thank you, Mike. Maria?
I think we have to definitely kind of take a two-pronged approach and maintain a connection with the state, so we can keep on chipping away at the law that's just unrealistic. But locally, we have to work on, you know, I think, I'm proud of the work of the town council to create the Affordable Housing Committee, and it, we created a mission. The mission is to focus on this problem. How do we meet the affordable housing issue in town? Educating the public, which means bringing in the public, having public hearings, discussing ways to fund it, so that you can be more proactive in where your affordable housing goes, and you maintain the control locally in town, rather than be at the mercy of, you know, a builder who just wants to take advantage of the rule. So I think we're on the right track, and we just have to keep working on that and support the Affordable Housing Committee on the town council.
Thank you. Eric?
Well, I think affordable housing is one of those terms like transparency in government that is open to such a wide interpretation, depending on who you're talking to. It means a lot of different things, and there's an awful lot of emotion involved in when you say affordable housing. So the first thing I would do if I were elected to town council is to get a copy of 830G and read it. And I would read the laws that are being discussed, because I think we've got to do is get out of the emotional arguments and get into the intelligent arguments about what affordable housing really means, and what it doesn't mean. And it's not an emotional discussion, an emotional argument. I've heard some creative, we've got to come up with creative ideas about what affordable housing means. We've got to come up with some creative ideas about workforce housing, which is something you don't hear nearly as much as you hear affordable housing. So, and I think there are a lot of smart people in this town, and I understand there are smart people in town council and in the selectmen's office, who can figure out how to work with Hartford and the state to meet the real needs that we're talking about.
Thank you. Keith?
Let me start by saying, if 830G were actually written in a way that addresses the lack of reasonably priced housing in New Canaan, we'd be having a different discussion. However, 830G and every state bill that has been proposed in this area does nothing other than to propose a tool for developers to get around local housing. No town employee, such as police, firemen, teachers, qualifies under 830G because they make too much money. Virtually none of our elderly do either. The potential tenants who do qualify often may not want to live in New Canaan because their jobs are elsewhere, and as we all know, restaurants, stores, and everything else is expensive here. We've had a strategy of trying to go from moratorium to moratorium, but COVID caused us to fall out of that. P&amp;Z rightfully rejected the proposed huge developments on Elm Street and elsewhere in town. And now the developers are suing to override those. As a lawyer, my experience says, our best course of action at this point is to use every legal means to resist. That means we defend P&amp;Z's actions in court using the best law firms we can find. If we lose at one level, we appeal to the next. We seek delays at every opportunity. In this way, we will wear out the developers and protect New Canaan.
Thank you. Once again, there's no basis for rebuttal, so we'll move on to question four. The RTC's open nomination process has attracted five highly qualified candidates for four seats on the town council. What makes you the best candidate for the job? We're going to start with Mike.
Sure. So like I said, I've been serving for six years. In that time, I've had, you know, vast education on municipal government, municipal financing, being a labor lawyer, which is primarily my background professionally. You know, our, our budget is $161 million or so, and I would say probably 70%, if not more, of that is locked up in labor contracts. So it brings certain value, to the extent I'm, you know, read in on the process of negotiating these contracts, to help bring that value, to at least work with our labor attorneys. So there's a lot of learning that I've acquired over the years, and, you know, I'm progressing forward on town council, and as I'm more adept and skilled in kind of understanding the issue, understanding the process, now I'm in a position to start really refining the process and making it more open to the public, and having more buy-in from the public, and hopefully having a positive impact on keeping our, you know, our spending down. So there's kind of like this progression forward now that I want to continue on, and I think it's truly in the best interest of the town. I like to think that I have good judgment enough where people respect it and like my style, like my direction and my approach to the issues, and not back down when I think there's something, you know, particularly wrong. You know, again, I'm doing this for my family, but I'm doing it for you. You know, anyone needs my help, I would give that to them. And that's how much I feel for all of us in this town. I really, really, really want to continue on to give you guys the expertise that I have, so we can continue to make this town exactly what we want it to be.
Thank you.
I would say, I hope you vote for me. I genuinely care about the town and the people that live here. I'm so proud to be part of the many volunteers in town who really focus on issues and dig into them. I feel I'm very good at working hard to listen to people and advocating on behalf of, you know, sometimes not popular views, and representing all the residents and the taxpayers in the town. You know, being in real estate, I do know we have a great mill rate. We have, it's a great deal in New Canaan. You have great house values, a good mill rate. We watch the spending, but I don't think we can let up on that. And I think we do have to, every now and then, say, do we, you know, is this a want or is this a need? And kind of keep tabs on what we're spending. So I do hope you vote for me, and thank you.
The first thing I thought of is I got no baggage. I haven't worked in town government. I have worked on town commissions and agencies, so I'm a new face. I'd like to think I'm a fresh face, but I'm a face that's been in town for most of my life. And when I say I love this town because I grew up here, I mean I love this town because I grew up here. And I'm running for town council because I want to serve the town that I love. And I know everybody talks about, we all talk about, and we should, fiscal responsibility. We should talk about being intelligent and making wise decisions, and maintaining what's beautiful and great about this town we all love and we live in. But at the end of the day, what I bring, I think, is the temperament, the collaborative nature, and the profound realization that I have two ears and one mouth, and I intend to listen more than I talk. I'm going to study, I'm going to learn, and if I'm elected, I'm going to work hard for you. Thank you.
I love New Canaan and its residents, as demonstrated by my years of involvement in As demonstrated by my years of involvement and leadership in all aspects of New Canaan, including serving in two town commissions for the last 22 years, I have shown that I'm committed to serving this community, and that I have effective people, leadership skills, that I seek collaboration and consensus, that I genuinely like people and care about their issues. And I usually find we could find common ground. We usually can have a joke, maybe a cup of coffee, and have a meeting of the minds. And that's the sort of spirit I would hope to bring to town council. I do think that my career experience as a lawyer specializing in finance, combined with my years of service in New Canaan, have prepared me to be a uniquely qualified candidate for town council. Please support my candidacy. Thank you.
Christina?
Okay. There are many qualities one can bring to the town council, but what's most important is to capture a wide range of expertise. I will bring to town council a professional level of expertise and experience and commitment to serve the residents first and foremost. We can only succeed if we have the courage to make a difference and stand up for what we believe is in the best interest for all in our town. I am running because I believe that a few good people can make a tremendous impact for the good of New Canaan. Every election brings about the opportunity to make the necessary changes to steer us in the right direction. I am asking for your support in my candidacy for town council, as I will commit to continue to provide the transparency, stand to represent you, and keep to a fiscally conservative path of checks and balances to ensure prudent spending and accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now on to the short answer. It's 30 seconds for response, and we're gonna start with Maria. If you do not win the caucus, will you support the winners?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes. Certainly, and considering I'm not a member of the slate, I hope that by supporting them, promising to support them, that they will really all promise to support me, too. Because I will certainly support them, whether I win or lose.
Thank you. Christina?
Yes.
And Mike?
100%.
Please give all our town council candidates a big round of applause. Hold on a second. So please join us at the caucus next week. Once again, it's on Tuesday, July 25th, 6:30 PM, Saks Middle School. Voting open from 6:45 to 9:00 PM. Please stop by the RTC booth at the sidewalk sale on Saturday. We will have many of the candidates at the booth. Before we say a final good night, I'd like to thank my RTC colleagues, particularly John Cheng, the RTC Vice Chair, for all of their work putting together tonight's candidate forum, the caucus, and all the other events during this caucus campaign. And thank you for coming out, and good night.